All right, great. We'll get started with the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. This meeting will be recorded. Is anyone else recording? Seeing no other people recording the meeting, we'll do, um, we'll call attendance, Jeremy Ega, Jonathan Hinkin,
Who here?
Brandy Nelson here. Thank you. We'll move on to formas. I see we have none.
None.
So seeing no formas, um, we have two sets of minutes to approve. We'll take them one at a time. We've got, um, the minutes from our September eleventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So move second.
Got a motion in a second by Jeremy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to the, uh, minutes from our joint meeting with the select board. Those are the minutes of August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. We have a motion to approve.
So move second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Any pose? Okay, carries. And we'll get into the meat of our meeting tonight, which is, um, discussion on the open space and recreation plan, um, with our goal to finalize the survey and discuss dates for community forums and review the stakeholders this. So, Mr. Rumble, you want to take it away?
Sure. Yeah, it would be great to leave this meeting tonight with a survey that's relatively finalized and some things, uh, for, uh, community meetings. And Seth can give us an overview of comments, you know, we've gotten to date on the survey, um, and, uh, some possible times for those meetings and the objectives of, of those. Um, also in front of you were comments from the Agricultural Commission. They met, uh, early this week, but didn't have quite enough time to deliver all their comments to Seth, so they're hoping that we can discuss them a little bit in their stead tonight. Um, I see Vivian is online tonight. Um, Ashley is representing the Conservation Commission during this process. You're welcome to come up to the table, anybody. Um, and so, yeah, why don't we start with the survey, Seth?
And sure.
See where we are.
And just one thing I wanted to add that I forwarded to you by email, but I didn't share with the whole group and I don't have Seth's email. Um, we received comments also from Husudanic Improvement Committee. Um, and I have them on my desktop, but if you don't mind sharing them with Seth. Uh, Husudanic Improvement Committee met on Tuesday night and looked at the survey and provided some feedback also.
Okay. And, um, if you want me to read those out later.
Sure. Okay. Uh, they really had just two, two things. One was just making sure we're brief sacred Barrington. You also say Husudanic, um, which was a comment I had last meeting as well. And, um, and then we did miss a big recreational facility. Um, the, what's commonly referred to as the Husie Dome. It is an, uh, Husudanic School, um, uh, gymnasium facility, and it's used widely in the community for all sorts of indoor recreational programming, basketball and senior programming.
Voting.
In addition to voting and other things, but it's, it's the only indoor recreational facility that the town owns.
Okay, so typically indoor recreational facilities aren't included. I mean, if there's something that you're wanting to get information about as part of the survey.
Yeah.
We could certainly include a question about there are certain improvements at the Husie Dome. And certainly we could have a, a mention of the Husie Dome in the plan, but typically indoor recreational elements aren't necessarily part of the purview of the plan.
As far as the state framework for that plan. Okay. I think we'd like to include it anyway because we would like this to be as broad as possible. You know, um, slightly more inclusive than what the state's minimum requirements might be.
Certainly, well-used and important asset.
We'll have to figure out where to plug it in, but I'm sure we can find a spot where it logically fits in the.
Thanks, Seth. So sorry.
So, uh, I can go ahead and share my screen and we'll go ahead. I think probably the best way to, to do this is to look at the survey. Um, because I did make some changes based on Chris's suggestions, so hopefully. So, um, we added a little bit in the first introduction. Uh, we added planning board to the list of boards and committees there as the first one.
Can you make that larger? We can't, we can't read that.
That's awesome. Thank you. That's not bad.
Oh, did you do that?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was able to change the screen a little bit.
Uh, then we added another, uh, sentence, just clarifying opens, what an open space and recreation plan is all about. So, uh, since there, the very end says open space and recreation plan is municipal planning document that analyzes outdoor recreation of recreation assets in the town and provides a ten-year window of goals and actions for the town. Then, just moving on, I moved all of the demographic questions to the very beginning.
I suggested that to Seth, thinking that those are nice kind of warm-up questions.
People, people know the answer to that.
Yeah. Hopefully, uh, so, uh, yeah.
So we start off with asking about residency status and, and, um, then go into the neighborhoods. Um, we hope to find where they're from. Then we ask about the demographics of the household. I did eliminate the, there were two different, uh, questions that asked about your age. The first one just asked about your individual age and the second one asked not only about your age, but also others in the household. Um, so that's the third question. The fourth question asks about household income. Fifth about languages spoken at home. Top six, uh, whether you own or rent. Then we jump right into recreation questions. Um, so these, on this first set, uh, we added reserve to Tom, Thomas and Poem with Brook Reserve. We removed, uh, McAllister. If I can read the ones crossed out, uh, park, but it's just McAllister Wildlife Refuge. Changed Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Park to Memorial Field. Uh, added campus to Simon's Rock and added Flag Rock as another choice.
Do you want to, do you want to put, is it Tomball?
Yeah.
That name. Tomball Mountain.
Oh, yeah.
That's brand new.
That's a new one from BNRC.
Is that, that's in Great Barrington?
Yeah.
Yes.
Partly in Great Barrington, partly in Oxford.
The, the new trailhead is in.
Great Barrington, if you want to go off.
Tomb, Tomball Ridge? I, I don't know what the.
I can tell you, yeah, Mount Tomball. Yeah.
We'll see what BNRC calls it and then we'll put it all up soon.
And also, uh, I'd like to see the Green River on there.
Or, is he remember?
Well, your favorite outdoor sites in Great Barrington.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got Husudanic River access, so Green River access would be. Good to add. Uh, I'm, I'm, sort of as I'm aware, the only access point to the Green River though is McAllister Park. Is that?
No.
That's not even legal, I don't think there.
There, there's no, um.
It's all privately owned, but.
The only.
But it's publicly used.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, um, the access to the Green River off of Town Roads is just to pop over the garden or a situation.
Most of those spots are signed, no parking though next to the bridge.
Yeah.
That was something that I talked about with, uh, her career.
I could see it coming up if people mark it as an important place. Um, I could see it coming up. Something that would eventually be part of a vision list or action, list of action.
Make access points.
To make access points, that public access.
Yeah. Uh, the next one, uh, at least on the paper copy that you all are looking at was what suggestions do you have for improving your favorite outdoor place? We moved that after question six. So we go into, uh, we added outdoor activities specifically on question. What was question three is now question eight. Uh, and then changed skiing to, uh, skiing cross-country and skiing down bend. Otherwise, the next few questions remain the same.
Before you leave that one?
Yeah.
Uh, after bicycling, can we say on and off the road? Because those are two different.
And there's, there's road cycling and there's mountain biking. Do we have mountain biking as separate category?
And also you might add photography.
Were, um, bicycling shows now, Brandy?
It does. It's the first one.
First one.
Oh.
They're alphabetical.
And the question is should there be mountain biking versus road biking? And they, they are very different.
Excuse me?
Yes.
How do we get a copy of the, we just changed survey?
I don't have a paper copy. We are showing it on screen.
Did you see it on screen? You come around.
Well, I, I'd like one either on my phone email to me or a paper copy. So I have it actually.
When we're, when this is done, we can share it, so.
Yeah, I guess I, uh, the one that we've got right now is going to be all modified, so.
That's the one I want, sure.
Actually.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe what I can do is I'll, I'll send Chris that modified version tomorrow after I've had a chance to incorporate all these edits.
So that, well, I mean, if you're doing mountain biking, it's like downhill now, right? Which is a, which, um, it's like a summer use for ski mountain.
But there's mountain biking that happens at the Bear Town.
No, no, I mean, as a third biking thing existed.
Can that not be mountain biking? Is that?
It's like different bikes.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not doing that at Butternut. No, they can't.
They won't ever.
My understanding is it does not meet their lease. It's, right?
They only have a certain number of days.
Um.
But if people want it, maybe the.
May, there is another category. There is another category, so, but.
I would, I, I guess I would also exercise caution in adding too many choices. Just Survey Monkey comes back and says, you've, you've got a lot of choices.
Saying, holy moly, what are you guys doing?
So.
There's a lot of recreation in town.
I know that it's not really recreation because it's like travel ways, but, um, so when it says like hiking and walking, what about just walking, like on town, uh, roads and sidewalks?
So I mean, I guess the question is, is there a, a demonstrable difference between?
Because I think that's like the most, like besides like gardening, those kinds of things, that's like the most basic one, right? You open your, your front door, you walk out of your house and you're doing the activity.
Okay, is plain walking not a category here?
Well, it's hiking slash walking, right?
I think, I, I think that's fine.
And then there's dog walking, which is sort of similar, but I can see where the dog walking would go, right? Because then maybe we need more parks or, you know, that kind of thing.
This is never going to be, but it's not that I'm not open to suggestions. This is never going to be a perfect survey. It is one tool to gather information. We'll do our best, but I think.
Let, I, let's try going. I think let's keep going.
But, actually, we haven't.
Oh, sorry, Ashley.
Um, I just, the fact that it says skiing cross-country and then you're also going to add skiing downhill. I think you should put skiing slash snowboarding because I do think that people are particular about that.
Can we agree that that would go with downhill?
Yes, I definitely think that should go downhill.
Cross-country, snowboarding.
They have, they have flipboards.
I just think that you, I'm going to pick one while we go.
Thank you.
I shouldn't keep on splitboarding up there, up there now.
All right, so the next one, um, asks about the frequency with which people participate in those activities, uh, whether it's daily, weekly, monthly, occasionally, whenever. Um, the order remains the same for these next few questions. We've got, uh, rating the following in your neighborhood for quality of town-owned parks and playgrounds, ability to walk for leisure. Then there, in that way, we're kind of drilling down a little bit more on walking, um, and, and, you know, folks' ability to walk from their home to park or playground. Um, question or?
Why are your, uh, questions? We don't. I can't remember if it's in here or not. Um, uh, the town cemeteries?
Uh.
Cause there's a lot of walking.
Lot of dog walking.
Dog walking that happen in sometimes.
Probably be in this first long list of properties. Um, or we could add another question about, specifically about, do you recreate in town cemeteries?
Yes.
Add it to the list, Jeremy, or add it separate?
Um, well, I don't think we should list all the cemeteries. But maybe as a rec, the recreation one.
Let's add it.
It just a general category means of, of town cemeteries.
Thanks. We're asking them to rank their top three. Should they be top five?
Well, I guess the other questions, these are arbitrary numbers. It's not necessarily asked to be top three.
Yeah. Just trying to get a sense of people's engagement for their responses.
Um, so what was question six is now, just scroll right down here. It's question eleven. Choose all relevance. Uh, yeah, question eleven, choose all relevant necessary improvements to Great Barrington Town Parks.
I would, to trash pickup, I would add recycling. And, and having containers out there for that.
What is like snow removal? Or like winter recreation fall and then?
Maybe winter maintenance is a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause then that can cover parking lots and.
Well, should we say just in Perrin, under improved park maintenance, mowing, snow removal? You think that's too broad or can we catch it in that particular item?
About summer, winter maintenance? Does that encapsulate it?
You want to call them?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that she had her hand up. Yeah, go ahead, Vivian. Vivian, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Hi.
Hi. Um, yeah, um, one of the comments that came up at the Agricultural Cultural Commission, um, meeting was, um, better seating availability at many of these sites, especially for elders and for those with disabilities who can't always be standing. You know, they may be able to stand and walk, but uh, need rest places, uh, in between. And, um, uh, also, uh, I, I would say that some outdoor recreation involves just sitting in a place and observing the, the birds or the pastures by or whatever.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Can we call that, like, facilities, like picnic tables, benches, bracket it that way?
So I, I've got, uh, additional benches for seniors or additional benches? I don't.
I, I don't think it has.
It doesn't have to be for seniors.
Doesn't have to be. Just putting at the, yeah, seniors might be more likely to need it, but no, everybody might like a place to sit.
Thank you.
Interesting too, because like the, the multi-use trails, like sometimes, like some communities, you see them where they have like, they're connecting, like sitting places still along the sides.
Some of our trails have seating areas.
Yeah. No, but I mean, like, you know, yeah, because we have like the one on, um, going to CH.
Some of the neighborhoods have benches in them, like going up steep hills. Yep, just alongside of the road. I don't know how, I don't know the origin of those, but I have observed them. It's a good, it's a good point.
I, I have a, a related question about this and, and maybe some of the other, um, uh, items. Um, is it a problem in, in terms of your analysis to have an other, uh, check mark where people could then, and then a, you know, line afterwards? You know how in surveys, there often are options for other where you fill in something that hasn't been, um, oh, that bot, the box at the bottom? No, that's not.
Most of the questions do have an, another choice. Could we add one to this? This one has one. If you checked any of the above boxes. Oh, I.
That's asking for you to develop it more. Yeah. Could we add another? I think that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Um, maybe other.
It may, it may require that I separate them into two questions because you may not be able to add two fill-in boxes. So I may have to split that out, uh, but that's, that's another issue. Okay.
Oh, well, like, maybe there could be an overall other for the whole survey? Are there, are any of these points to which you want to add something and then in the, I mean, questions and then you put question number and then other and blank?
I, I, you know, the only thing there, Vivian, that I've run across with surveys is that it becomes really like difficult to put them in categories and address. It just becomes just like sort of random catch-all. We, we, I think we would want to achieve what you're asking through some of the public meetings where we can have more of a dialogue. Um, the survey is really just to kind of get people started to think about the facilities and how they use them and how they could maybe be better served by those facilities.
Okay, I, I see that point. I thought, uh, just, uh, trying to add in some of the things that, uh, either came up at the meeting or, or af, I mean, or at a meeting or afterwards. Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, so then the next question, uh, asks about pressing barriers or concerns when it comes to outdoor recreation facilities. Chris pointed out that I had some capitalization there. So we removed those capitalizations and actually, um, I guess we do have kind of a, a, a fill-in-the-blank general question there in between. I think that got moved, uh, twelve. But then thirteen, uh, we removed those.
Wait, before you leave that one?
Yeah.
This is seven in the original one, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Um, one of the barriers, I think, is a lack of maps.
And. Lack of information, lack of maps.
Yeah, and just have more information on the town website and.
And you see that it's different than this item, lack of information about outdoor recreation opportunities. You, you have like more of a zoom back actual recreation facilities? Is that kind of where you're going with that?
Well, I just, I just think it would be handy to have maps or for.
Better.
Web apps.
Okay.
Or something.
I'll really add to that question or one other trace there.
Yeah, I'll add another line that asks about wayfinding and, and maps in town. Um, the next question asks about specific groups in town. Uh, we do ask about pets, but there was some discussion at the egg commission meeting the other night about specifically asking about dog parks, interesting dog parks. So possibly adding another question that would be specifically referencing, would you like to see a dog park in Great Barrington?
Just not in my backyard.
So is there consensus that that's a?
That's fine.
Yeah.
I think dogs are probably the most common pet that one would take out. Right?
Sorry, what?
I said dogs are probably the most common pet one would take out.
Yeah.
Occasionally see some cats.
Cats, strollers. Probably right.
But aside from cats and dogs, I don't see too many, you know, if you're like pet sheep out or anything.
We have.
Pet chickens.
Many horses have serviced them. Haven't seen one of those yet.
Emotional support frog.
So question fifteen was question nine. We just added outdoor activities. So what outdoor activities would you like to see more of in Great Barrington?
And the only reason I added that outdoors is because in the previous sequence, outdoor activities appeared. And it seemed to be in that sequence, but relative to the Husudic Improvement Committee's comment about the Husie Dome and indoor experiences, I mean, maybe saying outdoor activities is, is too limiting. I, I was just trying for consistency's sake, but you could probably remove the.
I agree with you based on the feedback we got from HIC.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry?
Sorry, Seth. We're trying to like synthesize a lot of.
Yeah, no, no, this is, this is, this is how it happens.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not. Could we add group hikes and bike rides? Group bike rides?
Is that not adult organized sports? I guess that'd be more team sport.
That sounds like team sports.
Maybe just group sporting activities. Yeah.
You know, I might, I'm going to plug in my computer just, just because it said, plug in. Okay. There's one very technical. For them to get that out there. So the next question, uh, was question ten, speaking on question sixteen. Use Williams and town parks and recreation funds for the following categories. Any changes, suggestions on that one? Chris didn't have any edits for that.
Should gardening be community gardening?
Uh, in terms of rec funds, that's probably not a bad suggestion. Cause you wouldn't be sponsoring like the boxes in my front yard, right?
Right, right.
Well, so I guess it begs the question, I don't know the answer to this, but do we have community garden already at the seniors level?
Yep, yes.
We do. Okay.
And then there is also a, um, Berkshire.
Oh, okay, yep.
Grounds. And I think the has, has parks talked about? Have, it's come up in parks, right? Has it come up in parks? I thought.
Where do you go inside? Not sure.
I think it's a good suggestion. Let's not get sidetracked. Let's stick community gardens in there.
Uh, so number twelve, we moved to the very end of the survey. That's asking about familiarity with Berkshire outside. And then the next image information about tick bites was also moved to the end of the survey.
Okay.
But Berkshire, Berkshire outside doesn't. Uh, it, it doesn't address roads that are good for walking. Uh, which is a really big deal.
But so we're just trying to gauge, we're putting it in there, number one, so people are aware that it exists. Not, hey, we can comment to Berkshires outside and say, these are roads.
I'd never seen it until tonight. I looked at it and didn't.
Yeah, there, there was this, there's, um, this really old map, um, Massachusetts map for cyclists. And it was really, it's a really cool one. And it has like, have you seen that one, Chris? It's, I, it's from the nineties and they haven't done anything with it, but it's, it's a really.
What is it? Like lightly traveled roads that are good?
It designates roads that are less dr, I mean, it's really old at this point, but it designate roads that are less traveled and it has like, uh, um, like symbols on the roads. So you know when you're going uphill or down. It's really, yeah. So, I mean, to that, I mean, it doesn't, it, because it's for cycling, doesn't really address walking because it's different, but.
Okay.
But something, it's, it's a cool kind of model that you can take to make a walking one. True, yeah.
Okay.
Show it for us.
And I know Estrava and some of the other online maps have
Yeah.
good information from that.
Or was the question if Garmin could be added to that list of, um, all trails, blah, blah.
Is it important to have the type of device or is it just some sort of online fitness tracker? Yeah.
Big Garmin, I, Garmin is a.
It's a device.
Manufacturer.
Strava's like, it, it can be so, it's like social. It's a.
It's like you plug in your, you plug in your trackers to this. Yeah, I think Garmin is the, the manufacturer of the, the actual like GPS system.
Oh, okay.
What's, what's neat about that is you can download, you can download maps right to your watch and the watch tells you when to turn.
I, you know, so, I think, sorry, are we just about through?
No, no, we're, we're just at the conservation.
Just the conservation, okay.
So, uh, what was thirteen is now eighteen. Uh, and we changed the wording to say indicate your level of support for the following or of the following policies slash strategies. We felt like that was better than activities, because those are more telling. And if you have a preference, I mean, we don't have to have both words. If you think strategies makes more sense, or policies makes more sense. Those are kind of conceptual.
Um, I think strategies is fine. Policy to me like connotes like some sort of governmental framework. Whereas it could be a mix of public, private types of approaches here for maintaining these different corridors or protecting different lands. Not necessarily things created through like land use policies.
Uh, question fourteen, we didn't make any modifications to, that's now question nineteen.
So on that one, uh. I don't know if it's a conservation practice or not, but how about providing access to the river across private land?
I wonder if we add it to the Eastman or sale of land to support trail improvements or river access?
Yep.
Oh, and change city.
Yes, I just noticed that city there.
City to town.
Yeah.
Instead of, instead of Eastman or sale, I would add license to it as well.
Eastman, sale, Eastman license or sale.
Because a license can be revoked.
Yeah.
Um, the next one. Yeah.
Vivian, do you have another comment or question?
Yes, uh, just, I don't know, it's a modification about the, uh, reducing the use of insecticide herbicide fertilizer to reduce infiltration into water bodies. Uh, and to, um, I don't know how to put it, uh, minimize harm to pollinators. I mean, that.
Scratch the to reduce infiltration and just leave it as reduced.
Yeah.
Use of insecticide herbicide fertilizers and that will capture.
Any number of.
Any number of reasons.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch that, sorry.
Rather than expand it, just reduce the number of words in there just to focus on reducing the use of insecticides, herbicides and fertilizers.
But, yeah, it's more general, that's fine.
Go ahead, Vivian.
No, I, no, let me just check, uh, cause I, uh. Uh, on the removing invasive species, um, that comes after, right after reducing the use of insecticides, herbicides. Uh, often removing invasive species, the first choice is the quickest, easiest, seemingly easiest one, which is the use of insect, uh, herbicides. Now, the, uh, the board of health and in consultation with the agricultural commission has, uh, greatly limited use of, um, glyphosate herbicides. On town, uh, own or manage land. Um, that was either last year or the year before that that was passed as a regulation. But, um, I, I'm just wondering whether there could be, they're removing, uh, removing invasive species. Could not just be left alone because for many people, what it automatically signals is apply what we just said, that we want to reduce.
Yeah, I, I think the challenge there Vivian is that this is question is about what an individual would be willing to do on their own property. And so the town policy, I mean, we don't have any enforcement mechanism. This is sort of like voluntary things people would be willing to, to engage in. We perhaps would say remove invasive species.
With, yeah, with minimal u- with minimal use of herbicides or something like that or, um, you know, ju- because I'm just afraid that it signals, you know, go. Go out there and spray them down. If unless you modify it somehow.
Okay.
I serve, I serve on the steering committee of the Massachusetts Pollinator Network and we are just inundated with people's, you know, who are fa- faced with invasives. Uh, you know, on their own property, I'm not talking about a town or city, uh, land. And people are just eager to, to, to use pesticides, herbicides, excuse me, pesticides is a general name that includes herbicides. Um, but, um, also includes against.
What if we say by means other than with herbicides?
Good, thank you.
That's a very interesting one because like. Because I think she's totally right. And then also, I mean, we're like, the only control you have is town owned properties, right? And so like with the rep part, it's like a lot of partners and then all of the individuals. And I, I think like the question is interesting, like what do you want to promote more, right? Getting rid of invasives or helping pollinate it? Because I think it's, it's. You know, I, I.
I, I hear your commentary, I'm just curious how this relates to the question at hand though. Or do you think we should change the wording or do you think? It, it, because this, you, you, we could go like way out on a trajectory here and we don't want to do that, we want to try and focus on getting through the survey. Sounds like the egg commission's got good recommendations on that then. All right, so we'll go on to the next item.
So, um, question, Chris had left me a note about, do we want to discuss the wording on this question? So this was question fifteen, now it's question twenty. Um, it says rate the following categories for town use of open space and conservation funds from high to low priority. And your category or your, uh. Your category reviews are preserve open space, preserve farmland, preserve wildlife corridors and habitat, tech drinking water, uh, bird and wildlife viewing. And then there's a, an other category there.
And my comment was. Do people outside of this room understand that question?
No, I don't understand the question.
So, yeah, it, as I read it over and over it, it, it was just not clear to me, you know. What you wanted me to do here, so, um, that's what I was getting at with the rewording. Can, can the average layperson understand, um, what we want them to do here?
Should it be more of a how instead of a rate the following with a question mark, like? How, how should the town preserve the use of? Funds for the conservation of open space? And then high, medium, low? Or rank how?
Yeah.
It's more a statement, right? Rank how the town should prioritize the use.
So. I guess I had, can you?
Rank how the town should prioritize the use of open space and conservation funds. For the following categories, it's just, it's a statement, right?
And you wanted to have a, a, a first, second, third, fourth?
You've got already high, medium, low, right?
Right, but they could put a high on every one of those categories, right? I wonder if it's, it's good you rank them, so what's your first most important, what's your second most?
About choose one, choose your most important and, well, no, because you.
I could set it up as a different type of question, so they could say, this is my top priority, second priority, all the way down.
That's probably a good way to do it, what do you think? And it would be, would that be then one through five and still an open ended question?
Um, it would, yeah, it would be one through five and then.
And then if there's a different priority.
I think that we can add another. I'll have to, I'll have to double check on, on how the question formatting works, but.
So Chris, can I ask a question about this one though? So in terms of the phrasing, open space and conservation funds? For the town use of open space and conservation fund, so this is essentially either grant funds that would be specific? Or is it C P E A, C P A?
This isn't spec- this isn't specific.
I guess I, that's.
I don't know if it needs to be, I think we could just say.
But I think.
Should the town use? Should we use town funds for these things? Trying to simplify that question. And is there a similar question for record for like parks and playgrounds?
That's a good.
Uh, similar in terms of.
Like how would you, so this is about.
I don't think it's a ranking word.
Open space and conservation, but is there a question about, um, you know, assuming, which we do have limited funds for conservation, open space and recreation? How would we prioritize them with? Our parks, improve existing equipment, improve accessibility? Add new parks, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, so I mean.
Park and playground, question two.
Question five, we asked about rating the phone in your neighborhood and that's where we ask about quality of parks, ability to walk to.
Okay.
The park, but it's a slightly different answer we're getting.
Are, Seth, are the conservation questions sort of, um, are they, uh, requirement? In the O S R P, um, planning document?
No, I mean, there's, there's nothing that, that says you need to follow a certain format for the questions. They have a suggested set of questions as part of the workbook, but.
Okay, okay.
So this is completely counterintuitive, but. What about housing? I mean, housing takes place, we need housing and, and it takes place on open space. So. Should that be addressed somehow?
Um, I feel like that's.
I told you.
I know.
In this plan, I, only so far, I think, as, as Chris and I discussed about, you know, innovative zoning bylaws that you guys have had. Enacted for preserving open space, cluster subdivisions, things like that. I mean, in terms of a, a general analysis of Great Barrington has X number of housing units and Y is occupied and. It's, it's not really the purview of this plan, I mean, there are other housing related plans that.
Didn't you make that louder?
I mean, I have no idea where I'm. It is an, it is an interesting place though, right, that you're bringing up like here. So is your priority to preserve open space, space or provide more housing, right? So you can do them both, but then you have to increase density where the housing already is versus increasing housing where the housing isn't, right?
Or creating open space with clusters of that.
It's, yeah, I, I, we're, we're stretching what this plan can do too far. It's a piece of a bigger plan, right? Um, with a specific focus, I think, I mean, your point, both of you are making excellent points just in terms of general land use, but I think it's beyond what the scope of this is. And.
I, I'd like to work on this question with Seth a little bit more to rephrase the question. To possibly collapse these categories, but also to add more specifics about parks and playgrounds and active recreation.
So there is a question, I was just scrolling back up through that is, do you support, I don't know what the numbering is anymore, I think it would be fifteen or sixteen. Do you support the use of town park and recreation funds for the following categories? It just asks about support. It doesn't, but it doesn't ask you to prioritize them. And so maybe, maybe the phrasing should be the same, do you support the use of funds, yes, no? Rather than trying to like rank and prioritize.
That's the old question ten, I think.
Yes, it was the old.
Parks and Recreation Funds for the.
But, but I think then it gets to both kind of categories there in this, Chris.
Yeah.
So you want to change that to a rank order rather than a yes now question?
I guess what's more useful to us in the end, is it more useful to have the information ranked or is it a binary yes, no?
I think the ranking is, is.
Helpful, so then I would say let's change the question for town parks and recreation to be a ranking and in the similar structure that you had. And, and perhaps we use the same language then for each question, one being about more kind of like active parks, facilities and the other being about. More passively used conservation facilities, does that make sense?
I don't know. So, um, then we have some just general kind of fill in the blank questions. We ask about. What do you think is the most important outdoor rec- natural resource in Great Barrington to be conserved? And then just a totally general, tell us something we missed or other concerns. And then the question about Berkshire's outside website.
Okay.
And finishes with what we had at the end of the demographic questions, but I think fits better at the end of the survey. Just how do you get information about parks and recreation, open space issues in Great Barrington?
You have a type.
Oh, wait, can you go back up to that question just real quick? So it's a city website, again, change to town, maybe just do a search for city and replace city with town.
Twenty-five.
I'll look through it for survey.
We can't edit that?
No, I, I can, I just.
Oh, you can't, there's, you have to manual, I got you, I got you, okay.
So.
I think you can.
It should, it should be either municipal or town website, not a city website.
Right.
Right, right, that's.
Yeah.
I think with the three buttons up at the, the three dots in the upper right corner, if you click on that, one of the. Uh, yeah, like, one of those things, you pull it down, it's like find and you can find on the page.
Uh, okay. I've never used that tool.
Oh, it's so useful. And then it'll give you, like, you type in your word and it'll tell you how many times that word occurs.
There it is, look at that, okay, great, thank you. Do we want the next step on the survey, like the next step in the process, like how to, like? How people were taking the survey and engage in the next step in the process? So that's, um, so after we ask about how you get information, then we ask about, would you like to leave your contact information? But. And that's. Do we also want to like tell them the process so that they, instead of just, has.
It, it's a good point, it, it, it could say instead, would you like to receive information, like there will be additional meetings forthcoming? Do you want to be contacted, add your contact information here, right?
Pick the dates, we can say there will be meetings.
On such and such and such and.
Why not?
Yeah.
Cause I think that's, because hopefully you're catching people with this and then hopefully you're.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good point.
And I suppose we should.
So with that, you want to look at dates?
Leave a contact email or we even do.
Good point.
Uh, yeah. We can put that as part of the sign off at the very end about, thank you for completing the survey, like more information.
Yeah.
That's it. What about? The high school as a recreation site? I mean, it's used. As that by people that aren't students as well.
It's a fair point, there is a lot of walking on the track, for instance.
Well.
Be added to the, to the first.
And the, and.
Yeah, tennis, don't they do? Yeah, tennis, don't they do pickleball there too? I think I've seen some pickleball and a little bit of like.
And that way we catch all the schools.
Yeah, that's fair.
Cause I think people use the, the middle, middle school too or.
It's mostly the high school though, they're kind of.
When my kids were little, I used to take them to the.
Littler, yeah.
Yeah, like little little.
Not a whole lot of adults.
Alright, so dates for community forums?
And um, I think we're planning on at least two general.
Yeah, probably one later, later on, but, but two kind of connected, one at the beginning of the survey process and then one. Once we've closed the survey and have the results to present the results.
So in terms of the survey, like, let's say we finalize it today, would we launch it like Monday or something?
It's up to you. I mean, I think it's, it's, it's sometimes nice to have it on like October first.
Sure.
Or, you know, and then say it'll be open for six weeks or eight weeks or however long. Um, you all decide. I mean, I think. You get decreasing participation the longer the survey is open.
Right.
You see with the blips of participation, so.
I think we need a lottery to. To get people to fill it out. It could be a, a prize at the end.
We'll figure that out. We have no budget for that, but yeah.
Hundred dollars at Domaine's. Well, we, we have talked about that Seth and I and um, I'm going to look at my budget. There, there's a lot to be said for. Providing a, you know, a drawing for a gift card or something. Just to reward people and pay them for their time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, it's, it's um, it, it is an important step, so something I need to do is look at my budget and see if we can do that. But we could add that to, to the email question here, you know, if you provide your email, put your.
You could, if you leave your contact information, you'll be entered into drawing for.
Yeah, you know, five gift cards for wherever. And.
Will we have a QR code that?
Um, but I want to talk, so let's assume the survey can launch um. Within a week's time. Forum number one would be, what were the focus of that?
That's presenting existing conditions and then the survey. So it's, it's kind of what the, the starting presentation that I brought to you all and, and. And then sort of here's the, here's the survey, maybe even having opportunities for people to complete the survey there right then and there.
Okay.
And so early October, mid?
Early October, I mean, again, it's, it's good to have some big event right at the beginning to kind of get.
There's a lot going on in October.
And are we thinking, is, I mean, is it possible to do? Oh, I hate to do this to Chris, a weekend. My, I'm gonna be around on the weekends. I'd be happy to attend those. Meetings if you couldn't make it. Ju- just to see if we get more people. Like on a Saturday or something?
With the rest of your board think, because you all have to be there too. What is this for?
This would be to have an initial forum, um, in public information session and introduce the survey to the community. Like we can certainly always add it to our meeting agendas, but I think a forum like warrants a, a meeting. And if we're trying to get a broad range of people is a weekend afternoon. Better than a Thursday evening, for instance.
Yeah, probably, but.
So can, should board members attend?
Is it, is the forum going to get people out so, or do you want to have a forum after you have all the feedback?
Do both.
We have to do both.
Um, I'll just put out there that it'll be tough to find a good weekend in October to do forum number one. So maybe that's whatever night we can all agree on, whatever day. Maybe the second forum, which is results and visioning, I assume.
Some visioning, but then there's another follow-on visioning where you, where you really present the.
So maybe number two or number three, where we have plenty of time to do outreach can be a, a weekend day. And plenty of time to schedule. For me, a weekend in October is way too soon to.
Um, are we still thinking that we can get this out in a, like in the first week of October?
I think that's useful, yeah.
And so what do you, Chris, I mean, what's your availability for forum one then? Are you thinking a weeknight? Cause I'm sure all your weeknights are full.
Well, why don't you turn the Thursday, October twenty-third planning board meeting into that?
Okay.
Would you use the space for that?
We could use whatever space.
This space or the fire department?
Use the library and well, that's a easy.
The fire department, um, meeting room is a good meeting room. So potentially there. Can check to see if that's available. Okay, so tentatively forum one would be um, location TBD, but um, October twenty-third. With the survey opening prior to that, is that correct?
Is that in addition to the planning board meeting or is it in place of it?
In place of, we had said we would dedicate our second monthly meetings to this pursuit. That way we don't interrupt book clubs and sporting events.
So are we thinking November, we're gonna try to do a weekend?
Uh, I don't know that we'll have, I, we may still be in survey mode. I mean, we're getting into like the dark, difficult season, scheduling any kind of meetings when you get around the holidays.
The one bonus is that while the survey is going on, there's really not a lot of work for us.
Yeah.
To do, so we could take that month off.
Yeah.
I mean, November's tougher or Thanksgiving anyways.
When should we close this?
Well, that's, that's the question. How long do you want to keep it open for? Takes to eight weeks is, is.
I would, I would say like we should run it through November fifteen. If you get it out the first week in October, only because I don't think you're going to get much traction after that. People are just going to be too busy with holiday plans and things like that, right?
So October first to November fifteenth?
That seems like reasonable amount of time.
During that time, we'll have. You know, we can. Put out flyers for the surveys, suppliers with the QR codes. And we can go to. Partners, other organizations that Seth and I have talked to already and remind them, okay, the survey's out. Person to get the word out. So that'll be a good six weeks of activity of getting people engaged.
The town social media, all of that stuff.
So here's our um, our draft flyer that we've got. So uh.
Can I just say like right off the top, I think open space and recreation plan survey should be bigger font than Great Barrington next. I would flip, block your fonts.
Lot more letters there.
I know, I know.
Uh, okay. Uh, paper copies, you know, we'll, we'll have. Usually what I do is deliver a couple of note folders with like ten paper copies to each of those spots with the. The instruction that if they run out, they can get more from me.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, they just have a completed folder, they keep all the completed ones. At the end of the survey, when it closes, I go and pick all those up and then enter all those.
Is there any reason we can't add Ram's still library? I feel like we should have paper copies available somewhere in Housatonic.
Oh, sure.
So if we just say Mason and Ram's still libraries?
Just, I think I can do that in here.
Thank you.
And we can. Edit the design and.
Sorry, it was just, it just jumped out.
Let's get the info on here. We have a graphic designer in the house who can help us really.
Great, that's fine.
So we're gonna open it in October first and close it November fifteenth.
Yeah.
Um, you've got the URL there.
Yeah.
And that QR code links to the survey and what I would say is. I'll go back and, and make these changes and then send Chris the, the link. To the, the, or this information and then what's most helpful is for you to all go and try it and, and kind of. Test it out, make sure that you can.
Yeah.
Answer all the columns and it will allow you to enter five. I mean, it should be set up, but there's always some, some ground truth in that it's be done.
Okay. So in that respect, Seth, are you gonna send us like the beta version before it goes live to try and?
Yeah, so I mean, right now, in fact, the, the, the links are live, so you could even scan the QR code and do it right now.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, or you could use that URL.
Okay.
Um, and it's basically if you do the survey and you want it to be eliminated, just put test. Into the fill in the blank, that's how I know. I do that myself. I'll put test in any of those responses. I just delete. If you can zoom in close enough on it, you should be able to open it.
And um, alright, so we did flyer, we have survey length. Um, what about forum number two?
Well, so I, I mean, I would say probably mid. I'm gonna guess you're gonna want to meet as a, as a board to discuss the results of the survey before presenting it, so.
I think that's a reasonable request. The challenge will. Uh, will be when, because we won't have a second meeting in November because of Thanksgiving. And probably December too. Yeah, so could you be ready i- in the second meeting in December, which is. Or first meeting in December, sorry. Okay.
The question then would be, do you want to fairly quickly follow along with a public forum where you're. Having digested that, presenting that information before Christmas.
Right. Uh, I.
It's.
I don't think it's.
What's the objective of forum number two?
Of, of presenting the survey results. I mean, that's the real focus and, and saying, here's what we heard from you, here's kind of what we're thinking about. For, for goals and objectives.
Just in terms, I don't want to like blow up a whole huge schedule, but it may make sense to do it in early January at our January meeting. What do you think?
I, I think that would make sense. I mean, that'll give you more time.
Yeah, we're gonna have too many conflicts and I think the community is just gonna be engaged in holiday related things. Anybody feel strongly about that?
Later in January.
January also has a fifth person.
Um, so our meetings are the eighth or the twenty-second, so if we were sticking with our second meeting, it'd be that. January twenty-second meeting for us.
Unless you want the weekend.
Unless we want to do a weekend, um, weekend prior to that is, is MLK weekend. So probably not rate, but maybe the weekend prior to that, the tenth, is that too soon? We could mention it in our meeting on the eighth. How's Saturday, January tenth for folks?
Right now, it's good.
Right now it's open. Block it up.
Well, until I buttered up me.
Well, I know, you're my problem. You're gonna be skiing the whole time. Let's tentatively say January tenth, and if we have to push it out.
Gotta make sure to.
Just to put something down. So we'll discuss the survey at our no, at our December eleventh meeting. That'll be just sort of early findings and report out, right? And then we would tentatively have forum two on the, about a month later then. And I would just say afternoon, I don't know the time, but.
And maybe the fire stations.
Maybe. And snacks should be provided, I think at both. Jonathan and I'll make cookies, right Jonathan?
Was there a third one?
That's probably far enough out that we.
Is that one gonna be a Saturday too?
So the one, forum one, we're talking about doing at our regular second October meeting. Forum two would be a non-meeting date and that would be on a Saturday.
Yeah, but I'm formed three is what I'm wondering.
I, we're not there yet.
I'm gonna be. Through, I mean, my February would be like.
I understood. Hopefully you can talk to some of your other board members to stand in in your place. You're exemplifying open space and recreation, right?
Wow.
You have to go live it.
I'm gonna be standing in the open space.
Alright, so the next thing is the review revised supplement list of stakeholder groups. I know Joe and Nina had sent her list along to us. Do we already have all of those in the listing, Chris?
I don't know.
Okay.
Cause I only saw that today.
Okay.
Um, I did send to the board. We had a list last time, it was in the old O S R P that we talked about. Um, that's a list that Seth essentially has been working with and adding some others as we went. And I can, I sent you, you know, kind of status report that of who Seth has spoken with or interviewed so far.
And that's changed actually quite a bit in the last couple of days.
Yeah, he's, he's been in town doing quite a bit of work. If there are others that we've missed, please let us know and let us know how to get in touch with them.
So just trying to quickly cross-check Joe and Nina's list with um, the list in your email. She does have a couple of really good suggestions, um, in, including them, families like ours who um. Works with communities that are um, disabled and would bring an important perspective.
All Out Adventures I've never heard.
I haven't either.
All Out Adventures Disability Organization, B N R C.
You, you don't actually have B N R C on here that I see. Oh yeah, you do. You've got that.
Yeah, I've already had a conversation with Nick Patel and Doug Brown from B N R C about. Trying to find a time to come in and talk to you all and.
Okay. Um, there's Green Nature and Monument Mountain High School, um.
I was in high school today.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to get a youth perspective. Uh, Joe and Nina is suggesting the Clio program, which is like the after-school program. And I can't remember who the director of that program is, but if you're having trouble reaching folks. I may have a contact just because I have kids in school. Flying Cloud, yeah, I think these are all great. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd say there's probably like a half dozen more that we want to pull off of her list that aren't already included on the stakeholder list. Alright. What else? And next item on our agenda, Mr. Rumble is the town planners.
Before, before you, you do that, they ask Seth a question, you probably don't know the answer to this. But. Uh, in terms of access to a river.
Uh, if it's a navigable river and you go in through town property, then you can go anywhere in the river.
Hmm.
If it's not a navigable river. The 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 state law talks about boating and everything and it doesn't talk about swimming or anything like that. And. Is that still the same? Or is it different?
I I believe so. That probably would be a concon question, maybe from the standpoint of, you know, like the beach access laws and and. Access to rivers and and lakes. Um.
Come on.
I I mean, I I do think that. There's guaranteed access to like the the Great Vons, right?
Yeah, yeah, but this is different.
Ten acre water bodies, you know, Massachusetts residents have.
Yeah.
Access to those.
What's navigable?
That's a it's a federal term and it's very loosely defined in my experience.
I would say the Green River is navigable today because you it's only four feet wide. You can you can step across it.
Well, that's that's crossable. Navigable not like.
Yeah.
Navigable by canoe.
I think technically it's been used like to could um. Uh, be used for interstate commerce.
Oh, wow, that's oh, really? That's the.
Well, the Green River goes into New York.
Yes, and so there is an interstate element there.
Good, good question.
Should do some digging.
Look forward to your research on that.
Yeah. Or David Demaskis.
Yeah, no.
Do you have anything else on this? Anything else for you, Jeremy? No? Okay. Town planners report?
Nothing to report on on this tonight.
Okay.
Um, just keeping it OSRP specific.
Okay.
Um, I I wanted to make sure it was on there because we had somehow lost it in the our running agenda items, so.
Ah, thank you for putting it back.
Usual list.
Got it. Sorry.
Nothing tonight.
My bad for letting it fall off. Alright, citizen speak? Um, anybody online? Yes, Vivian, you're still unmuted, so go right ahead.
Oh, hi. Um, just an announcement and I can follow up with the email. Um, uh, relevant to the discussion tonight, um, Grow Native Massachusetts program for uh. The Massachusetts Pollinator Network is sponsoring a free webinar on Tuesday, September thirtieth at seven PM. Uh, on Zoom called Rewild Your Campus. And it's a talk from the founder and co-director of Rewild Your Campus, an organization. On a mission to make campus grounds more sustainable. Uh, the presentation will give you actionable ways to get involved. Either as a student or as a community member or on the board of planning. Um, through the lens of pesticide reduction and increased biodiversity on campus grounds. And community spaces for the sake of human and environmental health. So since that's one of the themes I'm that I see being considered in the survey and certainly in your work, in your ongoing work. Uh, I thought that you all might be interested in this free uh webinar and I'll send the uh the 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 link. Um, who should I send it to you? To you, Brandy, or to?
That'd be fine. Yes, please. And could you please, Vivian, say one more time the date and time of that?
Yes, uh, Tuesday, September thirtieth, next Tuesday, uh, from seven to eight fifteen PM. Um, and it's called a rewa- it's on Zoom, um, and Rewild Your Campus. Which is one of the monthly presentations of the Massachusetts Pollinator Network, uh, which is a program. Of the uh Grow Native Massachusetts uh nonprofit organization.
Great, thank you for sharing that.
Can you get Bird to come?
Pardon?
Yes.
It's 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 pretty wild. It's getting wild over there.
Thank you. I'll I'll email it now.
Okay.
Alright, and Seth is you're you'll send me the draft. Survey that we worked on, so I can get that around.
Yeah, and the revised flyer. So and we'll and I think we'll have to work pretty closely to get that all. Ready to go for October first.
Sounds good.
And wanna publicize it, so. So you and I can talk about how we wanna spread the word.
At least at least by the by the third. Which is nice, right?
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Okay.
We say it's the third.
That sounds good.
In terms of the.
Getting the survey out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Between now and first.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So do we wanna change the date then to the third?
Yeah.
October.
Ten thirty is more realistic for us. Okay.
And we wanna keep it as November fifteenth?
I think so.
Okay. So then uh.
What day week is the fifteenth?
It's a Saturday.
We'll just ask all of you to to help publicize it.
Sounds good, we will.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Anything else anymore?
Right.
Okay, then we'll uh turn at seven seventeen. Thank you very much.